Yeah, let's do that. I'm glad you're leaving.
I think so.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with some housekeeping stuff. The exits are open here at the back corner of the room as well as when you came in. We have a generator, so if power goes out, it pop on. And if we do need to leave, follow Ron, Ron's always the first one out.
Oh, they're.
They'll take care of that. We are going to conduct a meeting in accordance with the rules and procedures that we approved earlier this year. There should be agendas over there if you want to follow along in what we're going to do. We'll follow the agenda. First meeting, our first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. You guys got a chance to review them? Comments, questions? They're most approved.
Moved.
Moved by Adrian, seconded by?
Tim.
Tim. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? No opposed. Okay, approved. Like a notice from Republicans, February fourteenth, twenty-fourth, in the Daily Messenger. First item up are the two paddock landing, uh, but, or, yeah. Applications, PB twelve oh one dash twenty-three and PB twelve oh two dash twenty-three. Come on up, tell us what's going on and we'll turn it to staff and we'll turn it to public, public thing, which is the public here. Yep.
Good evening, I'm Ryan, uh, the engineer's associates. Ryan, your mate tonight is Rob Brenner from Canada Development Company LLC. Uh, just to recap, following our last appearance before this tour, uh, we did meet with town staff on February fourteenth, uh, to review the draft conditions of approval. Subsequently, we've offered our input, the conditions, uh, based on our meeting results. Um, they are included on the, uh, draft preliminary resolutions that have circulated your attention tonight.
Yep.
With that being said, the board is comfortable, we like to move forward with closing with all the bearings tonight, and then also looking forward on both the preliminary subdivision and preliminary site plan approval of actions.
Okay. Okay, turn it over to Ron.
Okay, first thing, uh, I want to put in the minutes is the environmental notice bulletin published, the negative declaration today, and that is available online at the DMC, if anyone wants it. Secondly, at the last meeting, uh, you directed staff to meet with the applicant and his engineers to discuss comments and concerns in the draft resolutions that had previously been prepared. We did that, Lance, Dan, Augie, and myself. We came to agreement on the wording and we provided you the original resolution with the applicant's comments and then the final wording, uh, for the resolution, just so you would be able to track everything. I believe we're ready to act tonight on this, and I'd be glad to take any questions.
Okay, cool. All right, Augie.
Uh, no, nothing really to add to Ron. Uh, again, we met with the applicant and Ryan, the engineer, um, addressed all the, the comments, um, that they received. Uh, so I think from this point, our, our side of things, um, the building department is satisfied with the updates that have been submitted.
Okay, Tim?
Um, I have no comment on this.
Engineering?
Yeah, as Ryan mentioned, we met with them, so I don't have anything additional.
Okay. Um, it's a public hearing, do I have anybody in the room? Uh, we got some people online, you got anybody online? So anybody like to comment on the public landing or the paddock landing applications? And where you like to comment on the paddock landing application? Okay, board, any comments? Tim?
No, I noted all the changes to the resolutions and I'm okay.
Okay, Adrian.
It's time.
Okay, with that, I'll take a voice vote to close the public hearing on both applications. Motion by Adrian, seconded by Tim. Any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, aye. Public hearing's been closed, okay. With that, the resolution has been, uh, modified from our last ones. The green, uh, denotes the change, final change. Um, we'll start with the subdivision. So, uh, PB one two oh one dash twenty-three, a resolution with changes. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Adrian. Adrian, any other comments? Court take a roll call vote, please.
Delusia?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis. I'll. Ed Henry.
Aye. Okay, that one's approved. Okay, next item up is the overall preliminary site plan with changes, resolution with changes. Any additional comments? Have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution as presented. Moved by Adrian, seconded by Tim. Tim, any other comments? Court take a roll call vote, please.
Delusia?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis. Aye. What's your?
Aye. Guys, good.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Look forward to the rest, we have these things and we'll get through and get to finals and you guys can get moving.
Absolutely.
Okay? All right, next item up is, once I turn the page here. PB zero two zero, come on, let's see, yeah, I'm reading, zero two zero one dash twenty-four. Um, the Pintel Crossing is a public hearing. You guys come on up and tell us what's going on. Again, we are going to continue this one tonight, based on the resolution we have, but tell us what's happening.
Hi, I'm Pete Berman with Marathon Engineering.
Hey, Pete.
Uh, we got Evan Van Upst with Brickwood Management and Griffin Lidle with Conifer Realty.
Hey.
Uh, the manager here is the subdivision of, of phase two of the Pintel Crossing project. Uh, the two parts of our residential multifamily. Uh, project was originally designed as a two base project under ownership of Conifer. One, uh, big one was completed with eight buildings, uh, sixty-four apartment units, community building, parking facilities, stormwater management, uh, extension of Quinshire Drive and eight hundred seventy-five feet of Pintel Crossing, which is a private boat. Uh, phase two of the project didn't receive funding, so now it's being sold to Brickwood Management. It will be under the name of Brickwood Phase Two. Uh, also, since I had a time in town and Brickwood both presidential and a dedication of, uh, Pintel Crossing, uh, dedication had benefits to both sides, uh, time is upcoming, COVID facing project. Uh, this will allow access for the closing of the road during that project. Um, and also, our Brickwood's end there's lost state its costs upfront, uh, long term and front end development costs is, is a little, little bit more for the bill. Um, we can, uh, switch to other.
Yep.
Here, please. All right. Um, this is the proposed subdivision, darker blue is the dedicated Quinshire. Uh, lighter blue is the Pintel Crossing, which we're proposing to be dedicated. Uh, the green area is currently owned and will be cut by Conifer, it's eight acres in size. Uh, the orange is the parcel being purchased by Brickwood, that is five point two six acres in size. Uh, both the Conifer and Brickwood parcel to be bi-saturated by dedicated right away. Uh, our original submission, we had this as four separate lots, um, two Brickwood and two Conifer, each on the side of Pintel Crossing. Uh, we subsequently, uh, provided additional materials, uh, showing this is just going to be a two lot subdivision that will be bi-saturated by the right. Uh, this reduces the number of areas that's required for the subdivision, so. Uh, Brickwood Phase Two development, we're closing five buildings, but three units, uh, three, eight units are allowed by code. Uh, there are two buildings with five units and ten buildings with ten units, the market rates for rent needs. Uh, the result of the subdivisions, variances are required, five variances required for the Pintel Phase One project. Uh, we want the side and rear yard to have that variance as, uh, parking lot, front yard and apartment of parking lot. There's one variance required to the Brickwood portion of the project, uh, that's from set that variance, twenty-two feet for seventy to be wired. Uh, if you look at an aerial overlay in the project, if some other, other one, you can see that in subacts we are proposing are very similar to, uh, what is on line, the approach. Uh, should also be noted that without the dedication of the road, the project would not require any variance at all. So the town didn't have, uh, dedication of this, it's really what's kind of. Um, town developer pulled free that the building was completed with Pintel Crossing, it's a gold quarter, by rest of the piece right now, so there wouldn't be any changes needed. Uh, we ended the PRC meeting, got some comments from them, which will more specifically address their entire site plan approval process. I don't really know, we're just looking for input on subdivision. Um, our goal tonight is to get a positive recommendation from the ZBA. Uh, and we go, make a subdivision approval to the ZBA. Uh, we are planning on submitting with the ZBA on Monday, uh, I think we're going to positively agree with that. Yeah, project did a nutshell, so.
Good, I turned it over to staff, Ron.
No, I, we met with Matt Tomlinson from Marathon Engineering, discussed the change and how to reduce the number of variances needed and how it was important to the town to move this along, so. It's not a new application, it's still a subdivision of land, and therefore, uh, I think you can act tonight to, uh, continue the resolution, continue the public hearing and move forward with it.
Okay. Augie?
Are you going to say something else?
I was just going to say that secret resolution is included in that draft that you gave.
Okay, we have the continuation.
Classification of secret.
All right, is in the? Is in the continuation resolution? Okay, good, thanks. All right, Augie.
No, I, only thing that, I just want to reiterate, um, again, that the variances are being driven by the town taking dedication of this road. Um, so, we were, again, Ron, as Ron said, we worked with, uh, Marathon last week, I think it was, um, to reduce some variances. All in all, I think we're at a good point for continuation, for the zoning board to make their decision.
Okay, Tim?
Um, yeah, so, looking at that road, you know, we know we have to do down at Pintel Crossing, but I also went and looked at the other end. That's going to need some there, because that road is in no condition there down at Redfern and, and, uh, Running Buck. Um, the two catch basins, I mean, the catch basins are all right, there's a metal pipe running under the road, which, you know, is going to rot out at some point, so. That's going to probably need to be replaced and the gutters are not in good shape at that end of the road.
The only thing I would say, Tim, and we're talking about the road. I'm very concerned about traffic going through there when the bridge goes out, with residential being so close to the road and kids and everything else through that area. I don't have any idea in my mind what the fix would be, um, since we're doing it specifically because of the bridge and yada, yada, yada. Um, in hindsight, I would prefer it not be dedicated, so, so that you don't have that issue with such a concentrated area with kids and traffic coming when the, with the bridge without, that's modeling town, but don't have much of a choice, I guess.
Well, right, I know, uh, I think the town board's in favor of dedicating that road just for that purpose. I think the fire department also would like to see it be, uh, a town dedicated road for emergency equipment as well.
Very much.
Um, I do agree that it is very close down there by the, uh, by the apartments down there at Pintel, and there are children there.
The more kids are going out, getting to the school bus and stuff like that?
Yeah, definitely would be a concern, we know how people drive these days, they just don't seem to want to slow down, no matter what you do, but.
All right.
No.
How much we can do about it, I guess, um, engineering?
I don't have anything additional to add to this.
Okay, this is a public hearing, do we have anybody here to speak, uh, for or against this, uh, application? Uh, we are going to continue this application, keep the public hearing open on it. Um, but just in case, is there anybody just going online yet, right? So, does anybody want to speak for or against the, uh, Brickwood Phase Two, I guess is the proper name for it? Um, resolution? Do you have a resolution, the continuation resolution? Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes?
What bridge is I'm looking at?
Okay, just get your name though, quick, for the.
Brand, that's what.
And the other?
Two seven eighty-four, it's all red.
Okay.
We back, we back up to.
Okay, cool.
So, yeah, it's, it's the Wood Drive Bridge that's up from forty-one, it's, you know, it's, it's been flagged by the state that it needs to be replaced, so. Once we get it, I mean, I'm not anticipating it taking too long, once we get, they get started on it, contractor. But we're probably looking at a year or two before that happens.
So, it'll be a year or two before it starts, they take that bridge out, and how long you think it'll take them to do the bridge?
I'm going to guess, you know, two or three months, somewhere around there.
This road here?
Unless you want to go.
If you want to go toward, you want to go toward thirty, uh, three thirty-two, you would take that road, right?
Yeah, you'd go out Farmburg Drive or, or Clover Meadow, yeah.
Yep, that's the one.
I have another question, and I think it's something to do with the road, but when they built Pintel Crossing, they put in a, a nice berm of trees between Pintel, between the apartment half block and House President. I just wanted to make sure that that was going to stay.
Uh, yeah, we don't know that, it was down, probably just a bit, because I, we always have a legislature.
Yes, that was more, more there, but I don't think you guys are planning to take those trees out, right? When I don't.
I think that's part of the retention plan, it was already.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not saying, so I think all that will, but it'll touch anything on the original Pintel, it's right.
So.
Just as a resident, it's nice in the summer when the trees are.
Right, right. And you want to follow, though, when the site plan comes up after this and all, all the variances get taken care of, then you can look and see what it actually looks like, okay?
Depending by the map, I think it's going to be your, your first house, the line comes right along our.
Yeah, that'll be addressed with Ron.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Probably shouldn't have.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm not a member.
Okay, and you got the address from before, okay. And you guys are all signed in, right? All right, so, you, you read the resolution, you're okay with the resolution? Okay, we have a continuation resolution, which continues each public hearing, hope it, or did you have any comments on anything?
No problem.
On the subdivision. We're continuing to, to April third. Hey, I gotta go to, they gotta put in the application for the variances to the zoning. Okay, so we have a resolution, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution, which continues it and does the secret part?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Adrian, any other comments? Court take a roll call vote, please.
Delusia?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis. I have Ed Henry.
All right. All right, we're good to go there. Thank you. Next item up is, is a final site plan amendment. There you go. Final site plan amendment to the Union Crossing, um, project PB zero five zero seven dash one eight one. This is an amendment to the, so this is not a public hearing, but.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Alto, costume.
Anyway, you're in.
Uh, we were, we were, several years ago, uh, obtained. Final site plan sign offs in, uh, April of twenty twenty-one. Yep, for Blackwood Industrial Development Project, which had two hundred twenty buildings and four hundred and thirty-two thousand square.
Right.
On parcel, uh, site plans, although buildings were primarily on spec, would not have users. Uh, what's been going on for the last few years is trying to find users for those buildings.
Yeah?
Um, late in the year, last year, uh, Union Crossing, uh, had new compartments, something to be interested in along the buildings. Uh, their national requirements of building, um, different than just the two hundred and sixteen thousand square foot building footprint they were showing. They're looking for an initial two hundred thousand square foot building with potential add-on to, uh, a hundred thousand, so over three hundred thousand. Site plan has been redesigned, figured, uh, to keep the total building square footage of the project the same at four hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet. With the westernmost building being the first building, the building that we have a, 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 three hundred thousand. Second building would decrease in size down to the pounds, under thirty-two thousand, that's the easternmost building. Right. Western building not wired, uh, we made minor modifications to the plans to accommodate width of the building. Moving, you know, the pavement between buildings over, utility building and area over, narrowing the building east. Um, since we had various specific needs within buildings, plugging demands and loading docks were reduced from what was shown on the previous plan. Again, the previous plan was, uh, designed to be a worst-case scenario, and so, you know, pretty much anybody who came along looking for, you know, warehouse distribution, we'd be able to beat their, all right? And ultimately, in this case, have been able to repair it back. Uh, that's resulted in approximately two point four acre reduction in pervious surface. Um, stormwater. Um, to the full process with, um, here, um, staff, but it was actually, uh, a speeding permit. We had acquired the NOI and speeding permit for the, the only thing that didn't happen is we didn't vote for a letter of credit and actually go to construction. So, not have a user, you know, for that, for that building. Um, there were, we have received, you know, the staff members, uh, clarify a couple of things. By and large, the entire site would still be disturbed, all masquerading, that type of site, the masquerading, earthquake, um, storm sewer system would be installed. Really, that would not happen, and we had, uh, line workers older, for what we envisioned in phase one, will clarify about our, uh, supplemental dimension, the, pardon, eighty-nine feet of pavement off of building one would be installed. That allows for trucks to, you know, trailers to be parked, truck movements, whatever. The loading area for the second building would not be, in that phase, would not be installed, second building would be installed, parking area.
Right.
For that, so, the landforms out front, the landscape and all that is intended to be part of, you know, of phase one.
Phase one is the, the new building configuration, phase two would be the other building, when we get, we get a user for that one, but, you know,
the, the detail of that may, right, as well. Stormwater and all the rest of it has been left at the original pervious surface area of disturbances. So, that, you know, all that flexibility is still there, you know, so we're not, right, not going to reinvent it. Uh, I think the most substantive that we received was comments regarding reconfiguring the water system. Um, and we'll work with town staff regarding that. Uh, we had provided dialogue calculations before that showed that, you know, our connection to, uh, eight inch main on forty-one worked. Uh, you know, through the building nights, the vault F five pumps within them, again, we'll work with town staff regarding that. What's been important for this site is a couple of things. One, Ontario County planning does, you know, need this, you know, shovel-ready site.
Right, for many years.
Yeah.
I'll say that.
Well, and one of the things that really helped in terms of actually, the negotiations relative to.
Right.
Bringing somebody in to that was, you know, that there was approved site plan and modified. We understand there's a draft resolution for continuation of this, you know, one of the bigger things written, although we want to make sure we, we understand would be the timelines for that in terms of providing that supplemental information. Cause, you know, proposed user and his gear mounted act to get the building up and, um. Again, you know, primarily, the project is relatively unchanged from before you approved. We didn't, we didn't read that, any of what we were doing, you know, we moved the driveway access a few feet to the west to accommodate the wire building. Uh, we went to Ontario County planning last week, who primarily didn't have any comments regarding it. We did, there is an annotation on the plan, which I believe has created some confusion as well. Gravel area, we're at a hundred, uh, upper depiction of the gravel area, or building expansion. Uh, we were asked, you know, how many trucks could fit there? We wrote that number down, that is not intended, you know, that will be seven trucks parked there, or, uh, that was a demonstration to the, to the client, as to, you know, from a temporary standpoint, of what, how much could be there. It's not, uh, I think I was even in Ontario, I think, I'm not supposed to, okay, but happens with the building, it's, it's, uh, the truck stalls that are shown, the passenger car parking, whatever, it must be provided for the needs of client. And it, you know, meets, uh, further requirements for passenger car loading, you know, cargo installs and that stuff. Um, that's the reading, the digest version, like I said, we reviewed the staff, ten months, they're primarily, you know, take exception to any, you know, anything, it really looked like it's primarily just better clarification of, uh, of the space, you know, and.
Right.
And it's not really, you know, the nature of the project, again, like I said, is, the, the, except you know, the water service and storm laterals for the roof and whatever for the second building, and the pavements on that side. The only other, uh, discussion really is, we have the roof, heat, access, uh, and we would propose not to make that second connection point until the second building is built unless, you know. Um, you know. So, doesn't mean we want to build that second connection, that's part of the question.
Okay, now, do you know where this location is? This is the, uh, south, or, sorry, north side of forty-one there, and that paper they're putting, big buildings in there? Yeah?
Yeah, our daughter lives by.
Okay. So, so that's, that's all, I just want to make sure you knew what you're talking about. I think you did.
Our daughter lives on County Road Eight.
Yeah, right there, so, see, we're back, yeah. We've taken pretty good pains in the original one to make sure we have some pretty good, uh.
And the passenger car parking, this is on the far, yes, important, this line is probably a half of what I love in the previous.
Yeah, so we, that's one of the areas where the pervious surface area, the introduction. Okay, Ron?
So, you're, can you give us an idea what, how long it would take you to respond to the conditions that are in the resolution to MRB's comments and have that revised drawing ready?
I wouldn't say that we should be able to have drawn back in two weeks, you know, the, the phase in, unfortunately, like I said, you know, the line work is there, you know, if you look at the actual paper prints, some of this lighter, some of this darker, it wasn't really, you know. I think since they came in with all the buildings last time, they didn't really realize that there would be a bunch of, uh, questions regarding.
Right. The kicker is, is this, we only get one shot, instead of, you have preliminary and finalists, only the final, so, we got to get it right the first time.
Well, and, and, you know, any change, any change, further change to the plan, it's going to go there too, you know.
You can come in.
For us, is wanting to be, our understanding was that would be another site plan modification, so, you know, our intent, even from a bring, you know, if somebody comes along and says, I want that hundred and thirty-two thousand, we want as much of the infrastructure in as possible, because timelines with interest rates and what's going on in, 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 critical, you know, out. When can you bring the project? How, how long from when somebody says, I'm going to sign a, a letter of intent to date the space, to when it can be, you know, instructed and all.
Right, that's, so, okay. Okay, Ron?
So, two weeks from today would be the twenty-ninth?
I wish, I don't think so. It'll be March, March.
We're getting pretty short one, unfortunately.
In March.
One of me.
March sixth.
Yeah, it'll be the week of the, your, your, you know, so you're back for. you have to, you have to say your password. March planning board meetings are.
First and third. First Wednesday and the third Wednesday.
Six and twentieth.
No, obviously.
You'd have to have stuff in by the six.
Well, let me just go on the record to say that I don't think the planning board has any problem moving this as fast as we need to, but we'll leave it to staff. So work with staff and Augie and his team and make sure they get what they need in.
Yeah.
Get to the PRC, get the right documents, get them to us at the right time and we can have it at the whatever meeting that falls in. And I don't see any huge issue. Go ahead.
So if you were to come to the PRC with your, in advance, submit your drawings, that even it's a couple of days before, just so we have time to look at them. That would be a meaningful meeting to resolve any remaining issues. And then that, you'd have the PRC minutes and you could meet the second meeting in.
Why not? As long as I got the right stuff.
And we're, we're, what we talked with the town staff, most important is the water system and what easement's right, so we did. So we really need to make sure we have legal access to stop rather than just, uh, goes. When you look at the final document, there's something missing.
Well, if you can meet those timelines, then you could continue the discussion on this till the twenty sixth, twenty whatever day.
Continue again, it's a final, where it's not a public hearing, we'll continue it till when the the staff has the paperwork for us to put it on.
And I might have put a date there, the work, sure, how long it's taking, they wasn't sure if you were looking at this submission and, you know.
Yeah.
The next submission date would be March and we'd be in April, then, you know, June, July.
Staff knows how many days they needed ahead to get it to the staff and us to make sure there's no additional things. And once that happens, they'll throw it on the agenda and we'll be.
Yeah, we we just don't want you coming in on that Thursday to the PRC meeting and here's the maps.
Yeah, give them a little bit of time.
We'll work with you, you gotta work with us.
Any else, Ron?
No, that's it.
Augie, one thing for you before that, Doug sent in some comments today.
Nope.
Would you pass those on to the applicant as well as send them to the rest of the planning board?
Can do.
Cause Doug has some comments here and then Wood did request to see the landscaping plan. We did send that to him today, so make sure the landscaping plan is included to go out to the rest of the board. Okay, okay, Augie, your turn.
Um, so as Mike said, um, I talked with him la- early last week, I believe it was. Um, regarding some of my comments and comments from the fire department. Um, again, one of the biggest comments was the water service uh from what was proposed and originally approved. Um, at least as far as my side is concerned. Um, to what we've requested and uh the the background to that request for the board's understanding. Um, we've had other projects, uh, similar, um, smaller as well in size that we've had loop. Um, the way that we've, that I have requested in my comments. Um, so to kind of stay standard throughout the town and request the same from every applicant. Um, we've requested that Union Crossing with their development would tie into uh the main on County Road eight uh at that access point. Um, and also tie into the north of their property where All Your Mountain has um, a water line and easement that comes to that property line. And then that would loop around to the the west side of the property where Mini Tech has the eight inch main that comes in off of forty one. Um, there there is, I do believe easement work that would have to be done on that side as far as finalizing. And we'll, I will certainly work with the applicant on that. Uh, and that would eliminate any uh direct drills under County Road forty one, so they'd be able to loop everything essentially on property. Um, and there's a few more comments about just moving the, moving the hydrants out of the uh pavement area um to avoid any, you know, future disruption of any um work being done there. If there was ever a a main replacement or break, they had to be repaired. So, uh, aside from that, just, I just wanna clarify that for the board, so they understood um those comments as far as the rest of the comments. I know Dan had some. Um, pretty, pretty self-explanatory for those. Uh, and again, the fire department, you know, very similar comments to what I have. So, nothing further from us.
Cool, Highway?
Um, I have no comments on this one.
Yeah. Um. Thanks.
Although I support the town and their decision to move forward with the loop system. Uh, as Augie has mentioned, we've started requiring that on other similar projects. Um, and then as Mike Matalto mentioned earlier, uh, we did have some comments on the phasing plan, just looking for some clarification. I appreciate the explanation and look forward to seeing the project in March.
And like I said, we'll get you the comments from Doug also, so you can look at that, that would be critical. Again, yeah. Yep. Okay, uh.
Probably have to get along, I mean, we're gonna need, what you could have described a little different, so we're gonna need hybrid vessel data. What your proposed connections can change the analysis.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, work with staff, they'll do what they gotta do and get it on the right agenda and go forward. Or, uh, Tim?
Uh, yeah, we're allowed of, um, they have comments and I appreciate the, also appreciate the explanation. I am, I see that they're also in the resolution, so I understand at this point.
Yeah, and Adrian?
We're just gonna set the continuation date.
Yeah, we're just gonna do it now. The continuation is to whenever they get enough, they get the right information, you can put it on the agenda. Since it's not a public hearing, you don't have to set a date. Staff can just put it on the right one. Uh, Mike, just gotta give you just an overview of some of these. These are really, I think, fairly simple. Um, parking space striping, uh, phase two building stuff, light poles, dumpsters. Landscaping plan, building by design, so there's nothing really that big, you know.
Certainly hope not.
Yeah, and this is the stuff that, this is the stuff that Doug pointed out. He just wants some clarification on some stuff. So you'll, they'll, they'll send it to you. It's, it's, I didn't wanna make you think that this was something huge. It's just little stuff that we wanna keep.
Right. And you you just got that today?
I just got that today, yeah. Got that today, passed it on, so that's why I did that, so. Um, yeah, and he's I think he's in Colorado, but he's, Ian. Okay, any other comments from the board? Uh, do you have a motion to waive the reading and approve the continuation resolution as presented?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, sorry about. Adrian, any other comments? Or take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Doc, okay, you're good to go. Work with staff, they've got all the information and we'll get it to us and we'll vote, okay? Open and due. Okay, next item up is uh open discussion. We didn't have any other board matters, open discussion, Ron.
Yeah, we um sent a um email back to GLN and to BME today about the letter credit
Yes.
release for their property, clarifying a couple of things that we still see as missing. Uh, basically a language for the easement for access.
Right.
And and the hammer work and the sewer line that was installed. And that is the, uh, hopefully moving along. Hopefully we may see them at their first meeting in March for a letter credit release. We'll see how quickly they can get, get on board. Uh, last Wednesday, we had the bid opening for the sidewalk project. We had five bids. Um, they were all over the place. Uh, the lowest bid was one point four million dollars. The high bid was almost two million dollars. Um, so we're looking at the qualifications very carefully and looking at all the details. And as soon as we can figure out the responsible builder, we'll make a recommendation to the town board and get that thing moving along.
Good.
Hopefully those sidewalks can be put in this year. Um, there's also, I had a farmer this morning stop in the office. He talked to me about all of the inquiries that property owners are receiving from solar companies.
How'd I know you were growing solar?
And uh, they wanted to know how the town's solar regulation works, so we've got that on the agenda for the uh Ag Advisory Committee next month to look at addressing it as well as.
It's too big, the state takes over.
That's right. Um, and that's basically it for now, uh.
That's enough.
Yeah.
A lot going on. Good, keep up the good work.
There is a revised drawing out there from Whitestone in the hallway.
Uh huh.
Uh, the revisions uh include an additional commercial pad along three thirty two, which was requested by the town board.
Right.
The other thing that was requested, uh, and they agreed to was to, you know, continue the sidewalks from their property line north to County Road forty one. So that uh everything between forty one and Farmbrook would, on the east side of three thirty two would have sidewalks just as they are on the west side of three thirty two. So they did a little calculation. They've got two million dollars in amenities for uh only one incentive.
Yeah. Anything, anything else?
Uh, haven't heard anything on farming market center. Uh, I I know Mike's got his hands full with all kinds of projects. We can rent space in the basement night if you're.
Hey, you're gonna need an office. All right, thanks. Augie?
Uh, I don't have anything additional to add other than, um, at this point for the March, your March sixth meeting. You have the final site plan for Farmbrook seven A and seven B.
Okay. All right. Um, Highway?
Not much from Highway, you know, slow winter. Caught a lot of trees.
It's slow winter.
We finally did get our new ten wheeler truck in. It only took twenty two months to get it. So, we got it, yeah.
Twenty two months?
Twenty two months.
Thanks. Yeah, engineering, Lance?
Uh, been working with the town. We uh just as of today delivered the major thoroughfare overly district updated maps. Which, for the most part, just updating the parcels and the area photographs, be more reflective of current situation. Um, due to some of the ongoing projects, some of those roads have actually been installed, so we made those changes. But we did make a boundary change per the direction in the town as well, so the boundary is extended. Um, so it's, just be aware of that as that comes through the process of approval. Pay attention to that.
Okay, cool. Public, any other additional comments anybody would like to have? Okay, from my standpoint, um, continue to work with the staff on different things that pops up. Uh, if anybody has any questions, reach out to me. Tim, anything? Adrian? Motion to adjourn from Tim, seconded by Adrian, all favor? All right. All right, thank you, guys.